Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good evening to everyone. Welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners for Valentine's Day, Thursday, February 14. We will call the meeting to order. Mr. McCumber, can you please do the roll?
Good evening. We'll start with Commissioner Vonk.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Morgan.
Happily here.
Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Steck.
Here.
Constance.
Here.
Voorhees.
Coleman.
Here.
Breeby.
Saulfeld.
Here.
Sparks.
Present.
Melton.
Lovingly here.
Hennessy.
Hennessy here.
Here.
Bukowski.
Just here.
Womack.
Fergal.
Wooden.
Here and Paul Wissel.
Skaggs.
Here.
And Chair Bolter.
Here.
And I'm sure you have 17 present and two absent.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to call on Commissioner Skaggs for the invocation.
Thank you Chair. Today, I have Father Stephen Holmgren from Grace Episcopal Church, once the home church for East Grand Rapids President Gerald Ford. And Father, if you could also lead us in prayer for the Breeby family, one of our county commissioners. Her husband was recently in a car accident. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be asked to offer this prayer. And let's begin with a moment of silence during which we'll pray for your commissioner and his family. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the counties and cities of our nation. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civil life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. And that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. And now, Heavenly Father, we pray specifically for all those who work for the good of our county. Send down upon those who serve as commissioners the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. And all this, we ask for and pray for in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so much. We will move on to item five, Special Order of Business. I'll call on Dar Boss from our DPW to talk about a sustainability business park. Give us an update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. It's great to see you. We wanted to spend a few minutes tonight talking about the Sustainable Business Park, where it's at, where we're heading, and just provide a time for questions and discussion as we continue to advance this project forward. I'm more than willing to be the competition for Valentine's today, so if you need to blame someone, we can blame it on the Sustainable Business Park. So in 2015, we began to take a hard look at our department, the business that we're in. We've been in the business of waste management since the late 1960s. And we began to take a look at the volume of refues that was being managed throughout the county. We learned that 1.8 million cubic yards of refues is being generated annually. And as you can see in the slide, that has continued to grow. And we're seeing this occur because the economy is strong, we're seeing a lot of great decisions in the private and public sectors. And kind of the backside of all that growth and economic development and business is increased volume of refues being generated in the county. To give you some sense of what that looks like, the trajectory since 2010 is refues going to landfill has increased by 70%. And we have roughly nine years left of capacity in the existing South Kent landfill that's located at Hunter Street in US 131. And with that marked increase, we realized that there was time that we took a hard look at our business model and how we were managing refues. The line below there in red, you can see, is kind of the waste-to-energy facility just humming along, doing its thing. But the marked increase in landfill is what we were most concerned about. So to give you some sense of what 1.8 million cubic yards of refues sounds like or looks like is that would actually fill up an annual arena nine times over, or Michigan Stadium twice over. And we're doing that every year. So it's been our wonderment, our concern, of course, is that it's not, we're just not seeing a spike in municipal solid waste being generated. We're not having just a big year, and then it's going to fall back to some lesser amount in the future. We're seeing these marked increases year over year. And when we started looking at the volume of that material again, we knew we needed to do something. A couple of years ago, a study was commissioned by the West Michigan Sustainable Business Forum. It was verified through an ASTM standard study. And ultimately, it was produced and published by the Department of Environmental Quality. And what we found was in Kent County, half the refues that we're throwing away, so if you see the paper at 20%, and organic material at 37%, half of what we're throwing away is material that could be composted, is organic, is food waste, is corrugated cardboard, is paper. It's those types of materials that will break down and be composted or managed through anaerobic digestion or some type of other technology. Yet we're constructing landfill cells at South Kent landfill, spending millions of dollars to do so, only to really put in inert material where we're ultimately losing the nutrient value of that that could be placed into a compost or another process. And by doing so, reintroduce that to agriculture or to landscapers or others that could possibly use that material. So the Board of Public Works adopted a really bold goal several years ago. And that was, we wanted to reduce what was going to landfill by 90% by 2030. And one of the strategies that we explored and ultimately the Board of Public Works approved in October was to develop a sustainable business park. It's a business park that its entire focus is to ensure that municipal, industrial, and commercial waste is no longer going to landfill and instead is seen as a byproduct or discard where it can then be managed differently than just burying it a hole in the ground. Our goal, of course, is to implement the strategic plan and change the trajectory of how we're managing waste throughout Kent County. We're working collaboratively, of course, with Kent and with Alleghen Counties. We're working with Door Township and Byron Township and many of the other communities here in West Michigan that have interest in this. The Board gave us a three-year window to prove that in fact we are able to move forward with this concept. So really, we have from now until 2022 to move this project forward, to secure the financing and the visioning and the design and planning around it, and to begin to put a shovel in the ground. So we have two things that are occurring simultaneously. We have the business development piece, which is where we're engaging industry, companies, businesses that have interest both in siting at the facility and bringing their discards to us. And we have a utility and an infrastructure development parallel process where we're looking at how do we begin to move water, sewer, roads, and other infrastructure that will be needed to support this. So our team that has been with us from the beginning and continues to move forward with us is significant and noteworthy. We, of course, have our Board of Public Works giving us oversight and guidance. We had a stakeholder review committee that was comprised of six different committees that are former board, Dick Van der Molen chaired. He's both been on, of course, the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Public Works. Same old research group who's located here locally. We have Byerman-Fisk assisting us with some of the communications. Gershwin-Brickner-Brattan or GBB, they're a nationally known consultant. HGR, Fishback and the others there. So we really have a high-powered team of a lot of capable people providing us advice and guidance as we move forward. So the park consists of 250 acres. The property was purchased during the 80s and 90s and even in the last few years as we continue to purchase all the properties and the footprint. It was destined to be the extension of the South Kent landfill. But we believe these 250 acres could serve a better purpose, and we would like not to construct a landfill there and instead cite this business park. We issued a request for information along with purchasing last spring, and we had 23 responses representing 30 companies that expressed interest with different technologies, including composting, anaerobic digestion, fuel blending, various energy components, as well as mixed waste processing and other technologies that could be brought to West Michigan to process these materials. On that slide, you'll see roughly the 30 companies, a little hard to read, but we have the master plan document and all the responses available to any of the commissioners that may have interest in diving a little deeper with us. So this is really what it looks like. To your right, you'll see that the existing South Kent landfill is operating today. We have roughly nine years left. We operate really two facilities there. One is a monofill for the waste-to-energy combustion ash, and the other is destined for municipal solid waste, construction, demolition, debris, and other materials that residents and businesses bring us. So as you go to the left or south, as you enter into the south side of Byron Township and into Door Township, you'll see where we began to sketch out a map, if you will, that provides concept for what could be sited there and how it might lay out. So in the center there with the various colored properties, you're seeing places for composting, places for anaerobic digestion, mixed waste processing, organics processing. And then further to the left, as you go toward the southern extension of our property, a more traditional business park that could take the energy or recycling materials or other commodities that are processed at the business park and utilize those in the manufacturing or in other ways. So again, a concept, it's destined to look different than this when we're all said and done, but it provides you some sense of where we're going. And it gives us an opportunity to communicate better to all of our stakeholders as to what this could look like. And Fishback, a local consulting firm, assisted us with looking at the properties and their potential use. So by the numbers, we have a lot of information here, but just a couple of things to think about. One is 75% of the trash entering the landfill could readily be processed and managed differently if we chose to do that. During the study that I mentioned earlier with the Sustainable Business Forum, $1 million worth of deposit containers, bottled deposit containers are thrown away in Kent County every year. Earlier today, I was doing the math, going, well, how many containers really is that? So I did the math, and then I did the math, and then I took out my phone and did the math again. 10 million containers, deposit containers only, are thrown away in Kent County every year. And so when you begin to look at all of those different materials that are thrown away, whether it's corrugated cardboard or plastic bottles or glass bottles or metal, the food waste, the organic materials, if you separate that material and you process it differently, you don't have to throw it away and consider it one and done in the landfill. So 75% of our material can be readily recycled and processed. We had 23 respondents, 30 companies show interest in sitting at the landfill or at the business park. And we reached 86 million people nationally and internationally as we went through the request for information process. And we've garnered a lot of interest from many agencies and organizations that are really watching where this goes because they believe it's a true sustainable materials management model that can be replicated if we can prove success. I'd like to talk about what that means for Public Works. We've been invested in the landfill business since the late 1960s. We took over old dumps and converted them and closed them and then opened up North Kent landfill, filled that, closed that, moved over to South Kent landfill. That's another 300 and some acres. That's within nine years of being full. We have more acreage to go, but again, we prefer not to construct landfill with that. So as you can see with the picture there, we have a waste-to-energy facility. We have our recycling center where we take in 35,000 tons of residential curbside and drop-off recycling each year. We, of course, have the landfill and drop-off sites. So as we look to our future, we have to look at what we are now. And our current model is we have a recycling and education center, we have our South Kent landfill and our transfer station, and we have our waste-to-energy facility. And as we move forward, we'd like to see that one leg slide out, and then we'd like to slide in a new leg. So as the landfill is completely built out, as we fully utilize that asset, we slide in the Sustainable Business Park and maintain and expand the North Kent Transfer Station because we've seen a lot of growth to the north, and we're seeing records amount of material brought to that facility each year as well. I'd like to bring your attention to the waste-to-energy facility just briefly because that really has to be talked about in the context of the business park. We've been doing a lot of work on the future of the waste-to-energy facility, including looking at expansion, looking at a front-end processing facility that would process materials before it was combusted, and also looking at more source separation. I've quoted this before, but I'll offer it again. 21,000 tons of corrugated cardboard are delivered annually to the waste-to-energy facility that should be diverted out and recycled. But because of the way it's placed in containers throughout the county, waste containers, it comes to waste-to-energy because it's not source-uprated. That's one of many examples at our waste-to-energy facility. So we're challenged with the same growth issues that so many are here in Kent County and how it affects infrastructure. This is a bar chart that we put together to show you year to year since 2013, how much material that we've been receiving and combusting or transferring out at the waste-to-energy facility. And I would draw your attention to the last bar, which is 2018. We're just pulling the last of those statistics together. We are presently combusting about 185,000 tons of refues a year, generating about 100,000 megawatt hours of electricity each year, which is the equivalent of every home in the city of Walker. But we're now receiving 83,000 tons of municipal solid waste that we cannot combust because we're over capacity. So we're transferring that out to landfill. And one year ago, in 2017, that was 70,000 tons. So we've had a 13,000-ton increase in one year. So that gives you some idea in the six cities, in the flow district, how many good things are going on. But as a part of that is the waste generation, whether it be from residents, businesses, manufacturers, and the like. So bringing you back to the master plan for the business park, what does it mean for Kent County Board of Public Works and of course this board? We're assembling a business and economic development team so that we can pursue and engage the companies that responded to our request for information. We are looking at evaluating local, state, and national funding opportunities. And we're also seeking and will continue to seek the affirmation and alignment both with our local municipal partners and with industry because we need everyone's support and everyone's vision to embrace and move this forward for the county. And we need and we will continue to communicate the opportunities to our community to get them ready for this change. Part of the RFI process was that we have 1 million tons of waste-to-energy combustion ash at the monofill that I mentioned at South Kent landfill. We are now waiting for the final best responses from two companies that will be coming in to mine that material and remove all the precious and nonferrous metals and the scrap steel that we didn't extract out the first time through the process at waste-to-energy. And we'll hopefully be able to bring that to our Board of Public Works here in the coming months. Incidentally, we have been able to recycle because after we combust refues, we have magnets and conveyor systems that remove the ferrous steel. We have removed enough steel in the 29 years of operation to nearly build the Mackinac Bridge twice, or the US Gerald R. Ford aircraft carrier twice. Over 130,000 tons of steel just from the six communities that flow that material to that waste-to-energy facility. And so you think for a minute, what does that mean for the landfill? But the landfill, all that material is going there and it's not being recovered, and that's what the business park can do for us. Construction and demolition debris. If any of us drive around, we see all the construction. We see cranes up in the sky here in the city. We know that there's a lot of residential construction, new building, remodels, new commercial buildings being built. Nearly 20% of what's going to the North Kent Transfer Station and the South Kent landfill is construction and demolition debris. So that's anything from metal studs to wood studs to sheeting, shingles, small amounts of concrete, asphalt, all the things that you would see in a roll-off container at a construction site. So it's past time, and we have a committee working on, and it's a broad committee of organizations throughout West Michigan that are in the business of construction and deconstruction, looking at how to best move that forward. We have property identified at the business park, and we just simply need to go out to bid to build a turnkey C&amp;D facility. That would be roughly $45 million, and I don't throw that number out lightly, but it's not a significant investment to begin to tackle a large volume of material going to the South Kent landfill. And finally, we know there's a large interest and a need for organic and food waste recycling. It's become a national issue and attention. We think about our traditional yard waste, right? If we have a cart, we're putting our grass, we're putting other clippings in there from landscaping. But there's a lot of organics, predominantly food waste, that's going both to the waste-to-energy facility and the South Kent landfill that, again, once that nutrient is lost, it's lost forever. And for us to be able to introduce that into a compost process and make a viable compost product that then could go back to landscapers or to growers, we think it'd be very beneficial for Kent County. So as I wrap up, we were delayed a little bit by the polar vortex. We intended to kick off our Sustainable Value Analysis a couple of weeks ago, but we had to cancel that because of the weather that week. But in March, we're going to reconvene. We've got the team that I provided to you a little earlier, along with a few others, where we're going to get together and we're going to talk about the benefits of this business park in what's called a Sustainable Value Analysis. And what that means is, and the city of Howland did this when they were considering, do we close our coal-fired power plant? Do we build natural gas? What does that look like? It's a chance for us to put common definitions around, what does it mean to reduce or change truck traffic? How does emissions impact us? What about water quality? Why do you just economic develop in business retention? So we need to be able to measure that. We need to be able to measure that against a landfill operation and a Sustainable Business Park operation so that as we bring this to the community, to our local municipalities and the businesses, and back to you, that we have a common definition and a glossary to work from. And we'll be able to explain to you in real dollars what the benefits are to this process and what the impacts are of thinking about expanding the landfill. So with that, I'm more than happy to answer questions.
All right. Thank you, Dar. Great presentation. Questions today for Dar? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I think this is fabulous, and it'll be a great addition. The question that I have is, help me understand how it goes from end user into the sustainable park.
Sure. So there's always a need for transportation, and the transportation would still continue to be waste haulers. But what we would do is simply direct it differently. So whether you source separate and you're taking more materials and setting them aside at the curb, if you will, or at the back of the business, and separating those materials out, or you're bringing it to the business park where you're sorting it out, the waste haulers in between, whether they have roll-off trucks or compactor trucks, would continue to deliver that, but they would deliver it to the business park instead of a landfill. So mixed waste processing, or let me use the construction demolition debris. When a roll-off container leaves a construction site, currently it's full of cardboard and many other materials, and they simply go to the landfill, they dump it, and we bury it. Now it would go to the C&amp;D processing facility and where it's really like our recycling center on Wealthy, where we take all the materials apart in terms of it being mixed together, and we put all the concrete in one pile and all the wood in another pile. And of course, it's a little more detailed than that, but then it allows us to market that material as a commodity, as a fuel, instead of it just being buried.
So just as a follow-up, as a person who uses her waste hauler, right, am I going to stop using bags to put my trash in my container? Because, or is the bag, does it matter?
Well, there's several discussions going on. In fact, we have a residential recycling work group going as well. Because one of the things we want to do is markedly increase the amount of curbside recycling. And how we transition from the trash container to the recycling bin is another conversation and making it available, ensuring that it's of good value to the resident, that the waste haulers continue to be able to make a living, right? That's the triple bottom line and being able to generate revenue. As it stands, the business park could take mixed material, so you could bag it and we would unbag it. Or it could go in a cart, and it could come in the truck the way it is, just as we do at the recycling center. It'll be delivered to us in different ways, sometimes compactor truck, sometimes roll-off truck, sometimes more separated than less. But that's an evaluation that you do as it comes to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is my neighborhood down by the South Kent landfill. I drive by there multiple times a week. And just a couple of months ago, I was with my 12-year-old son, and he saw some activity at the top of the hill there. He's like, what? He's like, what is that? So I explained to him, you know, what a landfill was. He said, the entire hill is trash. I said, yep. So no doubt we have a challenge and I think the practices of the past are probably not the best practices for the future.
I believe there's seven million tons of refuse buried in the South Kent landfill today.
So what's the, where's the line where, you know, innovative government, you know, should stop and it gets into like a speculative venture, better left for the private sector? Specifically, just thinking of, you know, with our recycling operations and you get a large player in the international market for these materials that changes their behavior and suddenly the financial modeling that you're doing now may no longer apply. What's our risk profile?
So, and I agree. And so one of the driving principles, and we've remissioned our values and then our driving principles, one of our driving principles that was approved by the Board of Public Works is public-private partnerships, transparency and leadership. And in there, we believe from a public policy standpoint, we can provide leadership. From a business standpoint, we've been in this business for over 50 years, probably longer than almost anyone else in West Michigan. But from an innovation standpoint, public and private companies can together bring the best. So we see ourselves as more of a landlord where we're going to set the environmental standard and we're going to have the conversation and hopefully, as time goes by, the community as a whole, in a majority way, will embrace what we're doing. There are certain things that the industry has not provided much appetite for. For example, when we did our RFI, no one stepped up and said, we want to open a construction demolition debris processing facility, although we have the likes of some very large developers and very large construction companies quietly in our ears saying, we really need this. Help us figure out a way. And we have large office furniture manufacturers having conversations directly with us. We really need something different than what we're doing now. Help us find a way. And we did a study prior to all of this with the zero waste to landfill manufacturers as part of the Right Place and the Michigan Manufacturers Group, saying, we're trying to find new ways to manage the material. Help us find a way. But that being said, that's why we issued a request for information because what it demonstrated is there are likes of anaerobic digestion, fuels, composting, and other companies that would site there and they would operate and they would be tenants, if you will, long-term leases possibly. So it's a real blending. If we can help manage the message and the public policy and the visioning around this and operate portions of it, but we see the large majority of this park being operated by the private sector.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes. When I was going through this and one of the metrics was truck traffic. How close are we to any railroad tracks or railroad? Because a lot of recycling plants, especially with rubber, you know, they try to be close to the railroad track because that's a great way and efficient, cheap way of transportating some of these items.
So I just brought back up the slide. If you see the division between the South Kent landfill to the north?
Yeah, I was wondering if that blue one was a railroad track.
That's a railroad track right there.
Yeah, I want to ask.
And we've had a conversation, I think it's Elk Rapids? We've had a conversation with them and they've met with us and they've been part of the process because there is interest potentially not only bringing material here to be processed, but moving it out.
And when I saw it, I wanted to ask because I looked at underneath and it wasn't listed. But I thought that as a map would be a railroad, but I wanted to double check that. When it comes to sorting and it comes to like some of the high-value materials that are in high-tech items, what are we doing with that with some of our technological items that may come in now? And so many of those technological things have so many different materials in them. How are those being sorted and recycled?
I think there's two questions. The first question is, is there technology to enhance manual sorting? And there is.
Yes.
We use optical sort, we use magnets, there's something called eddy current. There's also more and more robotics being trained, if you will, through computer systems that will actually, are more efficient and quicker than picking, let's say, a plastic bottle off a processing line than you can do it manually with human hands, if you will. So there is emerging and new technologies and we're seeing those deployed in this country already. On this, on the second question, that is the complication of packaging. All we can do is continue to encourage manufacturers and consumers. And those that know me know that I tend to kid with my millennial staff a lot, but at the end of the day, we embrace their thinking because they're no longer willing to accept status quo. So when we think about packaging and the complexity of putting plastic and paper and all these other things, at the end of the day, packaging is to do two things. One is to ensure that the product gets to you in a wholesome way and that it comes to you undamaged. And then what do you do with that packaging afterwards? And it's the complexity of that packaging that sometimes makes it difficult. But I would, I would beg to you to say that I think that's not a significant issue when you look at 21,000 tons of corrugated cardboard going to the waste energy facility every year. That's just simply putting it in the wrong container.
Right. And when I look at the plastic and some of the items that we talked about, what percentage would rubber be? And when you look at recycling of rubbers and you think of the amount of cars in a state like Michigan and those tires that a lot of these garages try to find some very unusual ways of getting rid of, how are we doing on that rubber recycling?
On the rubber recycling, I can't speak specifically to the technology present, but I do know that we do not have a tire problem in Michigan because the biomass plants, so that's plants that are bringing railroad ties, burning forest byproduct, you know, from topping trees, they actually blend what's called tire-derived fuel into their mix, which creates a hotter, cleaner burn. And they are taking the large majority of tires in Michigan and the DEQ has all but eliminated tire piles. We do receive tires at South Kent landfill and at North Kent Transfer.
Okay.
And waste energy for that matter, but we actually divert them out and we send those to Indiana to a recycler.
Okay. And with our environmental oversight, when it comes to pollution with these new, new companies that may be in the business park, is there any projection on that? Or how are we, you know, talking to new businesses that may be coming in, we consider that we definitely don't want to, you know, increase pollution from this?
Certainly. And that would be on a case-by-case basis. So our next step is to go back to each respondent from the RFI, the request for information process, and really dive deep. And that's what we'll be doing because at the end of the day, you've got to look at what volume of material can they divert? How are they going to process it? What's the byproduct from that? And ultimately, as an environmental steward, is that to the standard that Kent County DPW and this board would accept?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Mayor Chair. Hi Dar. I was just wondering, first of all, I hope you believe in the, there's no such thing as a dumb question because I might be coming up with one right here. Having said that, what's the timetable for the park right now?
So as it stands, the Board of Public Works asked us to move things for the next three years. We need, while a lot of things have to happen before that and after that, we need to prove, it's kind of a proof of concept that we can get beyond the master plan and get two shovels in the ground. And as you know, when it comes to design and financing and shovels in the ground, three years can go by really quickly.
Is that completing?
No, no, that's really starting. So we're really in it here for the long game. We want to change the trajectory and we want to prove that this model can work in West Michigan and can be replicated. So we're going to do it the right way, all the way. That being said, is if we've made good progress in these next three years, we'll have touch points continually with the Board of Public Works. Now, at any time, they could choose to pull the plug. We could advise them that we're not making progress or we could advise them, we're making great progress and here's where we're standing, but we're not quite there yet. And they may extend that. So here's why 2022 is really important to us. In year 2023, we have to shift gears into landfill design, which will mean environmental studies, engineering, a host of things to prepare that property for landfill construction, which we don't want to do. Our Board of Public Works has told us for the next three years, you take that off the table. But if in these three years, we have not made great progress, then our board and our department needs to be responsible and come back and say, it's not working or here's why it's not working. Here's our options. One of the options is to put the landfill back on the table.
Okay. Kind of dovetails into my next question. I'm assuming this park being located right next to South Kent landfill is strategic, but if we're not going to get this thing up and running, let's say in six or seven years, I mean, we've got a lifespan, I think you said nine years left for South Kent. Where would we, where would the new landfill be located?
Well, the new landfill would be located where the business park is proposed to be. So we have to turn one off to turn the other on. And we do have other private industry partners with landfill operations that we can lean on in the short term, if you will, while we continue to move forward. So it's, we're not planning to fall off the face of the earth or off a crevice. I mean, this is well thought out and we'll keep close track of it. But that's where Chair Bonk was very clear with our department and saying, make sure you have the right off ramps, right? Let's move this thing forward. Let's see what we can do. We've got tremendous interest. I mean, we have the likes and probably shouldn't mention it in a public meeting, but we have some very credible local companies and organizations that are referring to our goals to reduce by 90% by 2030. And they're driving to that right now because we've started the discussion. And at the end of the day, I believe this business park will solve a lot of problems and will bring a fresh approach to how we manage discards. But also, we have already changed the trajectory of our discussion around, we need to do this differently. We really do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Dar. This is a innovative and intriguing strategy. Commissioner Antor asked one of my questions, but I'll follow up a little bit, and that is nine years left on the existing landfill. 2023 is sort of the pivot time for you to determine whether or not you need to change gears and get back into the landfill business. Is it a, is it an everything or nothing pivot? That is, is it possible to go and use some of this for landfill and still keep the business park for a component of it? So there's a spectrum of options that are available.
The answer would be yes. We could develop a portion of the property for landfill. One of the reasons why you consider that in terms of setbacks to things like streams and other things, you need to, there's a lot of environmental and design, construction, and cost. So you have, you know, you've got cost of economics in terms of if you build 100-acre landfill, likely it's a lot more expensive to build, own, and operate than a 400 or 500-acre landfill. So you always need to look at the ROI and what that cost would be. That being said is, I don't think you make a single decision, back to that sustainable value analysis, simply on the cost of the landfill versus sizing it differently so you can do other things on the property as well.
But you're suggesting though that we may have some tough decisions to make in about 2023.
I believe that's true because we also are looking at, we have a certain amount of airspace left for the monofil for our waste-to-energy combustion ash. I would much rather build a monofil of sanitized and stabilized combustion ash on that property than a municipal solid waste landfill where everything and anything's going to it for the purpose of, once you place it there, you can actually go back and mine the combustion ash. It's not typical to mine MSW landfill. It's just too many complicating factors.
Okay. And then just one last question. Are there other examples around the country where this business park model has been utilized and has proven itself?
I think we've moved it probably further than most. As I think about it, Austin, Texas has some things going on. Arizona, I want to say Tucson, and maybe Phoenix, I believe it's, maybe it's Phoenix. But I think we have actually, through the request for information process where we asked companies to respond to our concept, that was, I think, a new idea and garnered a lot of excitement because of the companies that responded to us. So there's variations throughout the country, but I would say that in many ways, we're cutting edge here. We're learning from each other. But I think we're going to be a pretty unique model if we can demonstrate concept here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So if you're successful in separating everything out, wood, plastic, cardboard, you mentioned all those things. When I hear of those products, I hear materials that burn very well. If you're successful of eliminating that, what's going to be left to burn in the incinerator?
Actually, given the projections of the increased economic growth in West Michigan, Kent County, and beyond, we have companies that call us every day from the Midwest that want to bring material to our waste energy facility as a waste, as a zero-waste-to-landfill alternative. They're large multinational companies because they're looking to not bring materials to landfill anymore. Based on where we believe the waste generation is going and the fact that we're already over capacity at the waste energy facility, that there'll be interplay between the two and there'll be plenty of waste to go around in terms of unfortunately, having the material to combust or having the material to process. And we can move material back and forth. For example, the high heating value, and I don't want to get into the weeds, but essentially because of the cardboard and plastic that's being delivered in large volumes to the waste energy facility, we burn too hot. In other words, we can produce enough, plenty of steam with less waste, which if you're using a traditional fuel like natural gas, you would want that. You want to be as efficient as possible. We lose 10% of our throughput or 30,000 tons a year of process capacity because the waste burns too hot because there's plastic and corrugated in the loads, too much of it. So to divert that material out is actually a good thing.
Okay. So as a backfill then, if you need more stuff and there's plenty of trash out there that people want to get in, will this trash coming in from outside Kent County, will they be paying a higher rate similar to the different rates that cities and the townships pay for the trash?
No, we haven't gone that far yet. Conceptually, I'm just kind of brought through. The way we look at it is you never build a single facility so large that in and of itself, it solves all your problems. Because if something changes in the market or you have to adapt to either fuels or commodities or whatever it might be, you want to have a good blending. And we charge a differential rate. There are programs out there that we've looked at where companies want to bring material to the waste energy facility from outside Kent County and outside the six cities. And there are what are called profile wastes where you can charge maybe double or triple what you're charging your local community because it's a privilege, if you will, to be able to bring your material there and be able to meet your sustainability goals as a company. And many companies do do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan, did you have a question?
No. Commissioner Stack asked my question. I was wondering if we were trailblazers in this and if there were any programs that we could look for. And I know that, is Commissioner Volkowski still on the DPW board? Oh, he's going to be all over this.
Bigger and faster, right, Commissioner?
Bigger and faster.
All right. If there are no other questions, I'm going to pitch the last one to Commissioner Bonk, who chairs the DPW.
Thank you, Chair. Dar has a bold plan here and it's backed by the DPW board and we're busy 24/7 on this plan. And I wouldn't be too stuck in the dates because it's going to be a learning experience. We're at the tip of the spear and as Matt says, competition with the private enterprise is the landfill. If we want to just do landfills and crush and throw up on the landfill, we can make money doing that. But doing the right thing is difficult and it's hard. And from John F. Kennedy, we're not doing this because it's easy. We're doing this because it's hard. To make the recycling really work at the beginning and it's not a profit center anymore. And all the privates have shuttered their doors and we're still in it and we're still fighting on. And so all these kinds of questions we have at the DPW board every month and we're making the best of a situation that's, could be a real bad situation. Up in Plainfield, we have an old landfill between five and four mile, four and five mile there. And that affluent has gone into Versleus Park, that used to be the wells for Plainfield Township. And so those wells later had to be shut down. First, we stripped the oils off that and we're able to mix it with our own township water and use that water. Well, today we can't do that. And so those wells had to be turned off. At one time, we thought this stuff just dissipated. It just sort of disappeared and we didn't have to worry about it. Those days are long gone. And so we've got to take responsibility for our trash and once upon a time, you'd buy a can of this and it'd come 12 to a pack and now everybody orders it from Amazon to get one and it's wrapped in cardboard. And now everybody orders it from Amazon to get one and it's wrapped in cardboard. So it's really double packed, everything. You know, who's causing all this? We are. And these are, there's going to be a lot of problems for a lot of years and it's just not going to be a two or three year fix. It's going to be multi-year fix. And for you board members that are here for a long time, you're going to be dealing with this and hopefully make this a better community. And PFAS isn't new to me. It was from day one when I'm Plainfield Township and we had a fluid coming out of Rockford and it's still going on today. We didn't call PFAS back then, but it was a waste issue. And Dar's on the right side of things and he's the man for the hour and he's doing a great job and I appreciate his good work.
Thank you, Dar, and thank you to all the members of the board and, and Chair Vonk for all your hard work. Thank you so much. All right, we are at item six, public comment. For those of you in the audience, I'm sure you're hearing more about landfills than you ever wanted to know. So I apologize for the, the long presentation, but.
If I could just, we're having a Department of Public Works Board meeting directly after this meeting for those that want to hear more.
Awesome. Yeah. If you didn't get enough, you can go get more. Yeah. Blunting for punishment on Valentine's Day. So, members of the public, welcome to our board meeting. We're glad you're here. It has been our practice for the last three years for individual public comment to be three minutes. A person wishing to address the board is requested to state their name and address. And we ask you to kind of keep it to issues relevant to the county. Linda, well, we have a timer there and she'll let you know when your time's about up, but just to kind of keep things rolling. So welcome and please first come, first served. Line up.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Teresa Phillips. I live at 1437 Lafayette. I'm in the 49507 zip code area. I am also with the parents and grandparents of healthy homes. We advocate to fight childhood lead poisoning. We, we have a vision that children should grow up in a healthy environment and not be harassed with education and, and health issues because it don't just stop with lead poisoning. And as you know, the 40950 area code is houses that are over 100 years old. So even though lead poisoning is in the whole county, it is rampant in the 4950 area code. We're asking that funds be made available so that we can have investigations in the home with children who lead levels are five or greater. The Health Department needs staff that will help affect families get to the bottom of the lead mystery, why they have it, to determine the source of a child's exposure directly and removal of the existing and potential hazards in their home. We can either pay now or pay later. For every dollar that is spent in the home, we see a, a return of 12 to $155. Or should I say, we will net a savings of over a billion dollars. The federal government isn't, isn't going to pay. They think local, local issues should be handled by local government. And we know policy drives the outcome. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. To the Kent County Commissioners and staff. So my name is Latasha Garrett and I am a parent for the advocate of the Parents of for Healthy Homes. I reside in the 1500 block of Margaret. And I want to bring to everyone's attention to the county's housing regulations that was passed in 1995. And the regulation states it should be the responsibility of the owner of any dwelling or dwelling units to correct or eliminate existing potential lead hazards as directed by the health officer. This gives the Health Department the authority to make landlords correct lead hazards before or after a child is hurt. This is what gave the authority to do what you all did for me in 1997, or should I say for my son. That's when the Kent County Health Department came to our house because of the, because his lead blood levels had reached 13. He was actually diagnosed with lead poisoning in 1995, two, which was two years earlier. And his lead level then was only at five, so there was nothing done about it. When it elevated to a 13, the Kent County Health Department worked with the landlord and gave them a specific time to fix the house. They had people come out with the machines to test the garage inside the house and on the walls and windows and the outside of the house, on the siding and yard. They scraped and repainted everything. That's why I personally know that the county is capable of doing these things for, for us. In 2019, Trayvon is now 24 years old. Since he was exposed to lead, his mind does not work the same. He has developed learning disabilities. He does not learn the same as others. Things that may be simple for others to understand is more complex for him. We need to take every lead level serious. What gives us the right to determine which child needs these services worse than others? Whether you're five or 13. But right now, we do hardly any environmental investigations at all. We need to help every child who tests at five for lead. Board of Commissioners, I want you to put yourself in my shoes of, or the shoes of any other parent. Release the money for our children, not for us, but for our children. Don't do it for mine because he's 24 years old. There, what's done for him is done now. And he has to live with it for the rest of his life. But do it for the children that you don't know. Do it for your great-great-grandchildren, the ones who are to come. Do it for any child that you may care about. I'm asking for you to release the money and get the Health Department into the houses of these children that are hurting our children in 49507. Will get the same benefits as 48612 because that's where it's at right now, 49507. Let's start somewhere. I'm just asking to meet us in the middle. And I urge to release the money that doesn't belong to you. We're the reason you sit in the seats that you're, that you're sitting in. So we're just asking you to, to do the job that we've placed you to do and we're not asking for no more and for no less. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tabitha Williams and I am also a parent and I'm a part of Parents for Healthy Homes. My zip code is 1100 block of Jefferson, 49507. The Kent County Lead Task Force, a two-year committee created by the county to determine the action steps that they could take to address lead, asked for additional investigator in their final report in 2018. This and all other requests by this task force were ignored in the 2019 budget. The county's promises are collecting dust. Kids are being hurt repeatedly. Why? Between 2010 and 2017, there were 443 homes in Kent County that have been poisoned kids, children, at least two different families. 62% of those homes were rentals. You have this big budget that's considered emergency fund or for a rainy day. But if our baby's being poisoned by lead is not a rainy day, you're right, it's a tsunami. We have example, this here that I hold in my hand. If this was leaded dust, paint dust, contaminated 10% lead, this amount would be enough to contaminate the floor of 1,500 square foot house or apartment. This is, this is it. You've had years to come up with a solution. We're tired. I offer you one in under three minutes. Release some of the budget to these children so that we can have the next mayor, the next scientist, the next lawyer. Because our children may not never reach that full potential because they're being poisoned. Their mind can never reach that potential. Trayvon cannot reach that, your seat. And we ask of you to do this now. This is an urgency. This is the emergency. And that's one solution offered in under three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Taylor Musel and I am a resident of Grand Rapids. And I'm also with Healthy Homes Coalition in support of Parents for Healthy Homes. I live at 1127 Franklin. And so I, I come here to urge you to listen to the words and deeply of these parent advocates and leaders who've spoken before me about the, the ground effects of lead poisoning because it's real and it affects kids for their whole lives. And so we want to see a solution put forward and that funding is put into a solution that we know works for our community, which are environmental investigations in homes by sanitarians who are deployed by the Health Department in response to elevated blood levels in children who are under the age of six. And we know that solutions often don't come without funding, right? And so resources have to be secured in order to prevent adequate staffing, provide adequate staffing to perform EBL investigations for the several hundred children in Kent County who are confirmed to have elevated blood levels every year. Lansing and outside sources haven't shown to be great prospects for this support. In fact, I know that we advocated for six to $10 million in Lansing and that was not successful at the end of last year. And so we're also grateful for things like chip funding that have come in to get the work picking up around environmental investigations at the Health Department. But we know that there's so much more to be done and so many more homes to check. And so we ask you to look internally, to look at the Kent County budget and prioritize this public health crisis when you're allocating funds. And I'm thankful for the detailed work that was mentioned before by the Kent County Lead Task Force. And I urge you to implement the recommendations that they put forward in order to make sure that the Health Department can uphold its duty to remove existing or potential lead hazards in our community. Our budget, your budget, the Kent County budget is healthy and we want our kids to be too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others for public comment today? Thank you so much for, again, your patience and for bringing this again to our attention. It is on our radar and we appreciate your passion tonight. So thank you so much. All right, we're going to move on to item seven, consent agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Skaggs.
I move the consent agenda. Support.
Support by, moved by Commissioner Skaggs, support by Commissioner Morgan. Rob, please call the roll.
On the passage of the consent agenda, Commissioner Vonk.
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees.
Coleman?
Yes.
Brivi?
Salfeld?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Volkowski?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Woodin?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chairman Volter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you, Mr. McCumber. All right, we are on to item eight, resolutions, and I will call on Commissioner Morgan for resolution eight.
Madam Chair, it's my privilege to move resolution seven of this date, the Kent County Fire Commission contract revision with fiscal services.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Morgan, support by Commissioner Jones. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. I just have one. I am going to be supporting this, but I did take it upon myself to make a couple of phone calls and I called and talked with the chief in, in the fire department in Kentwood and just asked what, what services or what response do we see from this in Kentwood? And I thought it was pretty telling when this gentleman who has a pretty significant role in the fire department in Kentwood really didn't know a lot about the fire commission board itself. So what we concluded in talking is that really it hasn't had a great impact or a non-great impact one way or another. Again, I am going to support it. I would like, though, to suggest strongly that this becomes something that perhaps is, the information is made more readily available. Again, it, it's not that a fire person wouldn't be important enough, but I wasn't talking to just the fire persons. I was talking to specific persons in the fire department. So that's my only suggestion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank Cal Brinks. We could not have a better person in place for our purchasing director. I mean, he is the consummate bean killer. And he just is.
Always wanted to be.
I think that's a compliment.
Yeah.
It is a compliment.
You aspire to.
He pours over everything to the nth degree and I just really appreciate the work he's done. This has been pretty difficult, like we talked about, and I appreciate him and his office, all the work they did. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Skaggs?
Well, I was going to send my time to Commissioner Wood and I know he wanted to go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a few more questions, if that's okay, to bring up Mr. Brinks.
Sure. Please come up, Cal.
For starters, I want to echo Commissioner Antor's sentiments. Thank you for all your work on this. Thanks for answering all my questions. And the way I'm going to thank you is asking a few more. So if you can walk me through again, with this revision to the agreement, the way the members' contribution is assessed has changed, correct? That's what I gathered from my conversation with Plainfield Fire Chief, and maybe I misunderstood you, but.
The methodology has changed the way the members assessed under this agreement, making it more equitable and fair to the members. The 50-50 split or anything has not changed.
Yes.
But it's purely how the, the assessment is assessed to the members annually. It's changed. There's other, other contract modifications, but that's a primary one. But certainly there are others as well.
And what was the previous assessment, just for my own curiosity?
And the formula?
Yeah, on the formula.
Okay. Well, it's very, very complicated, so I'll, I'll go on the big picture. It's based on operating expenses.
Gotcha.
Operating expenses are 50% member assessment, 50% county.
Yep.
Of the operating expenses, about 75% of that is the group insurance.
Yep.
The other portion of the assessment is an annual membership fee for the members to belong to the fire commission. That is assess the members and the county is certainly not assessed for that.
Yeah.
And then it's the annual contribution towards the apparatus purchase of that year. And that's a straight division among members equally and then split 50-50 with the county. So that's the big picture. The internal portion of the assessment, really what's changing is the assessment consists of the SEV.
Yep.
The population and the local contribution as a percentage to the other members.
Gotcha.
The local contribution portion is coming out of that assessment formula, which makes it more fair in today's, the way it is today.
Gotcha. One more follow-up question.
Sure.
In discussing changing the formula for each individual member, because if I'm remembering correctly from the Finance Committee, you described that the way the formula works out, it's not that the other entities in Kent, in Kent County who are not involved with the fire commission are prohibited from, it's just, it's cost prohibitive. You know, the cost benefit, and maybe I misunderstood you, but was there ever a discussion on figuring out how we could try to bring in the other entities in Kent County into the fire commission for the purchasing and insurance? And whether or not figuring out a new formula that would negate that barrier?
The focus of the board was to deal with the assessment and equity and get it updated as opposed to a marketing attempt to bring others in. The assessment and the original concept of the fire commission was to assist the smaller members in a collaborative. And so the assessment is designed that, and it doesn't really matter who the entity is. The bigger you are as an entity, the less advantage it is to be a member of the fire department.
Thank you. Those were all my questions.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? Oh, Commissioner Skaggs.
I guess I'll.
I thought you reverted your time. I'm just joking. All right, go ahead.
Reclaiming my time. Um, the, so I want to follow up on Commissioner Wood and then, so in that, in that last sentence that you said, it, it appears to me from page three of the contract, application for membership, any village, township or fire authority apply, may apply. So who can't apply?
I will refer that, I guess, to Linda on that one.
I'm speaking, can the Grand Rapids Fire Department apply?
Historically, the way the fire commission was set up, it was not open to cities and that did not change in this, this amendment. It was designed for the smaller municipalities, the townships, villages, and that's where the focus has always been. Some, there, there's a, there's some ghosts of, of history past with regard to. Some, there's some ghosts of history past with regard to Cedar Springs and Rockford. I'm afraid I don't have the actual contract in front of me, but the way it's written right now is it is for townships and villages. And I know Commissioner Morgan's been in on the Fire Board on following through on these proposed amendments.
Any other questions, Commissioner? Skaggs?
One other, I guess one other thing I'd, well, one of the other things I would remind the board of is, the original formula, one of the elements that made it more expensive for cities was that we factored in the budget for their own departments. So that's why a lot of the bigger municipalities did not join in because it was more expensive because that was one of the factors.
So wait, then, if I can, so would they be allowed to join in?
The way the contract is written right now, the answer is no.
Okay.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This goes back, has a long history of collaboration for some of the outlying departments. I think right now there's sixteen or seventeen departments. There may be a couple more smaller departments that would like to get in on the fact that if you collaborate with the county for this amount of money, you get a little insurance and once every sixteen years you get a pumper for response. And for those police officers, first responders, and EMS, that covers probably about seventy percent of the county, these outlying areas that we're talking about, that covers a lot of roads and a lot of interstate. And so it gives them a resource that we kind of value because it's really nice when you're out on a slippery winter night and you have to shut down a road to have a vehicle or some kind of equipment available to help you get a patient out of a car. And I guess we've never really gone to the fact of where you lived or what your residence status was when these first responders are out there doing their job. But this was primarily to give some collaboration and to build up some fire departments in the outlying areas so they could become self-sufficient. And I think it's a very good program. I think it's worked well. These professionals out there, they train hard and they utilize this program for insurance, some maintenance repair, and a pumper every sixteen years. So I think it's a relatively good program to help boost some of these outlying departments.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps some of my colleagues could help me a little bit with some questions that I'm struggling with. I guess I haven't really thought about this Fire Commission that much over the years, but strikes me that, what'd we say, sixteen or more individual departments? I wonder if that's particularly efficient. I don't think we would support a different emergency vehicle service, EMS service in every township. Kind of makes sense to spread that over several. So I'm wondering if there's been any movement toward, because consolidation to save dollars over the years? Have we talked about that? Are we talking about that?
Do you want to answer that?
That's been connected with the Fire Commission?
Commissioner Vonck?
At one time, we had a joint contract with the City of Rockford. That went on for a number of years, went out of supervisor there. I think that lasted for four, six years, something like that. And you talk about this plan that we're talking about as before us right now. In nineteen eighty, when I first came on the Plainfield Township Board, Plainfield Township was only ten thousand. Today, we're the fourth largest governing body in the county. We're thirty-three thousand, maybe more than that. Things have changed a whole lot, but still in the rural areas, most of those guys probably are paid on call. They work at the local hardware store, lumberyard, or body shop, and when the siren goes off, they're there and they need a piece of equipment to be on and a quality piece of equipment, and that's what this provides.
To answer your question, Commissioner Talon, yeah, we've, the county has established these things. The county, through their Safety Committee in nineteen sixty-eight, established an ambulance service called North Kent Ambulance Service. And it was to serve the underserved populations when the undertakers got out of the business and they started saying you needed a licensed unit to do first response with an ambulance. The county stepped in through their Safety Committee and established North Kent Ambulance Service, which became Rockford Ambulance Service. So, yeah, there's a long history of trying to enhance some of the services in the county to enhance the outlying areas and to provide these services. So that's just one suggestion that I can offer up.
There is, there are entities that...
Call on Commissioner Jones, who chairs the Fire Commission.
And I used to, chair of the Fire, I mean, former chair.
Yeah, former chair.
But just to the, so I was on Cannon Township's Board. We did have conversations about what it would maybe look like, and this was back before I came here. And I think one of the challenges is if you haven't been out north to visit, I recommend we go for a drive. And then I think if you were to see the distance of what has to be covered, you can see where, in Cannon Township's case, why they have two fire stations and why they take care of their own boundaries. Now, in the case of what you're asking about, where it has made sense, it's already happened. And Cal can address, we do have entities that have collaborations who are members of the fire. We have Regens and Lowell that did collaborate just for that reason. So in my opinion, has made sense out there, it's already happened.
All right. Commissioner Womack?
Yes, it's sometimes rumors that here at the county, that sometimes the commissioners fall on different sides based on geographically where they're from, if the commissioner's from the city, if the commissioner's from the township. And just myself and my representation, when it comes to first response teams, as I said before, you know, any life that we're out there trying to help, whether it's with equipment, whether it's funding those officers, fire, anything that can help save a life, as I say, even if it's only one life, it's worth it. And I'm sure many more lives are affected by our decision to support the Fire Commission. And at the same time, as one of the commissioners from the city, that it's always been a voice for us to understand some of the needs of our township. I do ask at the same time, commissioners from the townships do understand that, you know, in our city, just as we've heard from people from the 49507 today, there are going to be issues that we're going to need help from the township for us to help in the city. And I know everybody does this, but we have to be reminded that no matter what locale we come from, we represent all the people in Kent County. Whether they're on a farm, whether they're in a suburb, whether in an urban area, whether they're the CEO of a large corporation, whether there's somebody in the welfare line, whether they're homeless, whether they're a police officer, whether they're a teacher, whether they're an elected official, we represent getting services, quality services from Kent County for all of the people in this county. So as I will be supporting the Fire Commission, I'll definitely be supporting some of this equipment in our townships. I do take this opportunity to remind our commissioners from the township, we're going to need your help when it comes to this lead situation. We're going to need more meetings with the public because some of the recommendations that came from the task force were great, but as the people have stated today, it just isn't enough. So our work is far from done, but I'll keep it short. I will be, I will, I will be, I definitely will be supporting this today.
All right.
Yeah, I'll keep it short, but I had to take that opportunity.
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you. Just the other night, maybe last night or the night before, they had a nationwide story about how difficult it is to get volunteer firemen anymore, recruiting them and training them, because, you know, it takes a big chunk out of your life. There's a lot of training that you're continually, you know, is evolving. So they got to keep coming back for more and more training. And it takes time away from their families. When you get volunteers out there, you know, some of them are volunteers, some of them get paid a little bit, but you really want to at least equip them with decent, you know, equipment because they're already putting their lives on the line with, and if they got inferior equipment or if they don't have a ladder truck available to them or a platform truck, it just makes their job so much more difficult. And I know, you know, around the cities, at least the bigger cities, they do have that type of equipment and they have probably better training opportunities because it's hard to get volunteers all in the same room at the same time because they got other things going on. So, again, I'm really happy to sit on that board. I think we're doing really good work and I'm just, I know Cal's doing, he should be getting paid overtime for the amount of work he puts in on this, so he does a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. Boy, I thought I understood this coming into tonight's meeting. A lot of interesting conversation about whether cities want to in, which I can't imagine, but that they want in, or that we're going to do a consolidated fire operation across the county. Am I missing it? But this is just a question of whether or not the members changed the formula of allocating the costs.
Correct.
That's all we have before us?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Saulfeld?
Thank you. Since I represent a district that has exactly half of my population in the Fire Commission and the other half not in the Fire Commission, I think I'm well-suited to address this issue. I appreciate Commissioner Steck's comment, and that is to the point. But I really want to thank my colleague to my right. You like that title? Colleague to my right? Who I think hit the nail on the head here. You know, we got to think, not in context of our district, but what's good for the county. We heard about lead tonight and we heard a specific zip code, and I'm sure it would not be appropriate if I said, well, that zip code is not in my district, so therefore I'm not going to support anything there. You know, and we can point to tremendous amounts of things over the years. The South Clinic that we paid for at Kentwood a few years ago, two million dollars, and I guarantee you, very few, if any, of my constituents use that. But I voted in favor of that and I think it's good for the county. And so I hope we keep that in mind as we deal with any issue coming forward. Years ago, there was township versus city arguments. That's long past. We've matured as a county beyond that, and now it's time for collaboration and moving forward into these new generations, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Skaggs?
So I agree, we ought to be focused on what's for the good of the county. I think Commissioner Saulfeld is right about that. I certainly agree with Commissioner Morgan that this is a great program and with Commissioner Antor and his thanks for the volunteers. I only ask that we would expand this program. If it's for the good of the county, let's make it good for the whole county. I haven't gotten a good answer really here about why only certain townships are allowed to be in this Fire Commission, but this is, seems to me to be discriminatory towards people that live in cities, people that live in my district. I mean, I think I'm qualified to talk about it because zero percent of my district is in the Fire Commission. And I just don't get why. So, sure, let's get a pumper every sixteen years. You know, my taxpayers in East Grand Rapids are paying for a pumper. They wouldn't mind a little bit of help. That'd be great.
Half a pumper.
I'll take any pumper. I'll take a quarter of a pumper. What I would want is that the formula is fair for taxpayers. I think that's good for the whole county. That's why I'll be voting no, and hoping that we can come back and revisit this so that we can get to a place where we really are thinking about making sure that all of our residents have this program available to them and not just some.
All right. Any other comments? Oh, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. So we are all sitting here today because when I started as a commissioner, one of my assignments was on the Fire Commission, which I took very seriously and then ended up being chair. And in learning how this works and looking at how it was operating, I stopped and said, hey, I'm kind of curious. We've had this organization for over forty years. Is that right? Linda, four? Yep. Yep, so this has existed for over forty years, and the contract that has been in place hasn't changed in that timeframe. So really, every forty years, whether it needs it or not, we really, as a government entity, have a duty to pick things up, look at it, evaluate it, is it still working or does it need to change? So after many, many meetings, a lot of discussion, it was determined that this needed to have an overhaul. And the overhaul is before us. And it was through a lot of lifting and a lot of work, and could we have just kept it the same and not even brought it up to this point? Absolutely. This was a lot of effort and a lot of work, and a lot of times, I believe it could be argued that some folks just thought maybe, hey, this is, we'll just let this go another year. Just, it'll be fine. But when I look at this, it needs to really reflect the right direction for the future. So Commissioner Antor, who has been there much longer than I have, thank you so much for your time and regular attendance. Thank you for Linda, who spent quite a bit of time as our attorney to make this happen and to write this up, and for Cal, who is the anchor to the whole piece. And I will give Cal a lot of credit because one of the pieces that was brought up was the process for the operations, having the county in the mix. He even said, hey, is this the best way to do this or should this be done a different way? And the entire group, without hesitation, wants to keep Kent County purchasing and Cal at the helm because of how well it's done. So with that, I really hope that the commissioners here recognize what a significant lift years of time to get to this point. And I will add that a no vote doesn't get rid of the Fire Commission. A no vote, if we have a majority of no's, just has the Fire Commission operating as it's always operated. Okay, this is an opportunity for this contract to go to the membership, for the membership to then decide if they agree to it, and then it would change. Because we can vote yes, but that doesn't do it. It has to go one level more to the membership for their votes. So I just wanted to kind of summarize exactly what you're doing here with your yes and your no votes. Thank you.
All right. You know, we have a rule that you're only supposed to talk twice. All right, Commissioner Womack, last comments.
One of our colleagues is in here, and we have a nice-sized crowd here today, and he says something that probably should be repeated, that some of the things that we're doing, I think it was Voorhees, Commissioner Voorhees, that says, some of the things we're doing for the townships when it comes to fire equipment can be used when people are not actually from that township, traveling whether on the highway and being in trouble and needing first response teams and fire, whether it's a car accident, any number of reasons, that is not just people in those townships. In the City of Grand Rapids, you know, I talked to them about a lot of the issues and if they had addressed me, as I talked to the Commissioner, City Manager, I talked to the commissioners, I talked to constituents in Grand Rapids, if they had expressed to me that, hey, we want to be in that commission, we want that equipment, it wasn't something that they brought to me. So I really don't think it's a city, that the city feel they're being left out. A lot of times I tell families, and one thing my father taught me, hey, you just ate. Just because somebody else eating doesn't mean you have to eat every time somebody else eat. You know, it's not fair, I'm not eating again, you know, you just ate. So I definitely would be supporting that, but without Voorhees not being here today, I want to say that had a tremendous impact on me because it made common sense, and I've seen it happen. I've been in accidents on my way back to Grand Rapids, Michigan, and need the first response teams that were not of Grand Rapids. And since he wasn't there, I just wanted to express one of his opinions here today.
Thank you. All right, with... Chair, if there are a roll call though, please? That is a valid request. Rob, can you please call the roll?
On the passage of Resolution Two, fourteen nineteen seven, Chairman Vonck, I'm sorry, Commissioner Vonck.
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees. Coleman?
Yes.
Breevy. Saulfeld?
Yes.
Sparks?
Absolutely.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Lukowski?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Wooden?
No.
Skaggs?
No.
Chairman Walter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have fifteen yes votes and two no votes.
Thank you, Mr. McCumber. On to item B, Resolution B, I call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. I move for adoption of Resolution Eight of today's date, which calls for acceptance and appropriation of two...
for acceptance and appropriation of $238,434 to the 2018 health fund budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Steck. Do I have a second?
Second.
Removed by Commissioner Jones. Any questions or comments on Resolution B? All right. Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Mr. McCumber.
On the passage of Resolution 214198, Commissioner Vonk.
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Commissioner Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees.
Coleman?
Yes.
Breevy.
Saulfeld.
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Lukowski?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chairman Volter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, 17 yes votes, zero nay votes.
Thank you, Mr. McCumber. Onto Resolution C. I call in Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I move we adopt Resolution 214199 to add one shipping and receiving clerk to one position from Kent County Community Action.
Moved by Commissioner Jones, support by Commissioner Saulfeld. Questions or comments on Resolution Item C? Seeing none. This is not a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right. We are on to Item 9, our second public comment, which is a one-minute public comment. Do we have any other members of the community that would like to speak for one minute? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to Commissioner Reports, Item 10. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to let everyone know that I did attend the Supervisors' Meeting on February 11th. I took the opportunity to thank Commissioner Morgan, who has spent many years in that role, and let them know that I am their now assigned representative. And I'd like to thank our sheriff and our undersheriff, who spent the majority of the time giving an update on what's going on in that department, along with their gratitude for the additional response help during our emergency crisis that we had with the weather challenges, and how much they appreciated the local departments stepping up and helping, and what a tremendous collaborative effort it made to have their department and all the other departments working together with that. So, I just thought I would share that that was an important meeting that I was at, and that was the presentation. It was well done. So, thank you both for coming out to do that.
All right. Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks, Madam Chair. We got through all the weather at the airport okay. I didn't get any phone calls, so that's a good thing. We do have one big problem out there. We're running out of parking.
Wow.
Just want to let everybody know that.
Wow.
We know.
Commissioner Saulfeld, did you have a report?
I did. The Rules Subcommittee has met now on three occasions, and we have another meeting on Monday morning, March 11th, at 7:30 a.m. And by the way, that's the day after daylight savings time kicks in, so that's, we'll feel like 6:30 a.m. But that's our next meeting. It could be our final meeting. We're getting, moving along pretty quickly and should be close to having something to present shortly after that.
Thank you for all your work on that. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair Volter. Primary agenda item at yesterday's Grand Rapids DDA meeting was a report from, on the work of the downtown ambassadors. I've left a little flyer at your desk. Rather than me go through all this, I'll let you read a summary of some of the outcomes and some of the work that they've accomplished.
Great, thank you. Any other official reports for tonight? Commissioner Wooden?
AAA Advisory Council met on the 4th of February. Due to the legislative changeover, most of the meeting revolved around getting to know who is in what positions now, and Commissioner, or former Commissioner Harold Mass was able to give that report, and then staff provided a report on services that AAA is providing across the Moley County jurisdiction.
Great. All right. No other official reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 11, Commissioner Mis, oh, yeah, Commissioner Miscellaneous. Any Commissioner, Commissioner Melton?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple. I know that others have certainly voiced the sentiment, but with all the challenges that we've had in our weather, the month of January has certainly not gone unnoticed. Our road commissions and the Sheriff's Department, our first responders, et cetera, et cetera, I know that they've just got to be exhausted. Another group of persons, though, that I would really like to take time to acknowledge are our superintendents of the schools here in Kent County. What a miserable job to have. You can't really, you can't please the population that you are trying to serve so hard. And I just, my hat goes off to each and every one of them to weigh what is safe for our children, and yet what is also a good idea for the school and for the persons being involved. So, I just would really like to mention them. And piggybacking on what Commissioner Saulfeld and Womack said, I would really like to urge our board to take what we have heard tonight about the lead very, very seriously. I think we all do. Not just, boy, we take it seriously, but let's do something about it. Let's make it a priority. Let's give it the same attention, the same, more so. What am I talking about? We are talking about children's lives, and they're near and dear to my heart, and I just cannot even begin to imagine what it must feel like to know that where I am living might possibly be poisoning my children. It just, to me, that should not happen, and I don't want to know that it's happening in my county. So, that's all I have to say. I could go on and on, other than, "How did you like your cookie?"
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. I too want to thank the folks from Healthy Homes that came out. And as we continue to focus on this issue, look forward to maybe conversations at finance, if there's opportunities in the 19 budget that we're not aware of at this time. Also, of course, to thank the on-again, off-again retired Jack Stewart, who's hiding in the back row, who was part of our response these last few weeks of winter weather excitement. And then last but not least, if you didn't see the email yet, Pam sent along the invitation to the NAACP Officers swearing in next Tuesday night. Address is in the email, so I hope you can join me at that. That's next Tuesday night.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. While we're thanking, I also want to throw thanks to Craig Paul, who also spent quite a bit of time on the Fire Commission documents, so thank you, Craig.
Commissioner Wooden.
I just want to echo Commissioners Melton and Bukowski's sentiments in thanking folks from Healthy Homes Coalition for showing up today. You know, prior to my service on this county commission, I served on the Grand Rapids Housing Appeals Board, which reviews violations to the housing code. And part of that requirement is visiting houses that are in violation once a year. And one of my visits, I don't think I've ever been as furious as I was after one of them. The condition that a investor-owned rental that one of these families was living in was deplorable. And that complaint was done after Healthy Homes had urged them to make that complaint because they were able to detect the blood lead levels in their children. And so, I can echo the concerns of this crisis, and whatever we can do to both prevent it from happening and holding people accountable to ensure that it doesn't happen again is welcomed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to extend an opportunity to brainstorm to my colleague, Commissioner Skaggs, as the commissioner from Byron Township with the landfill down there. If we need to explore a way to pile up an equitable portion of trash in East Grand Rapids, I'm open to that discussion. I would also just like to say thank you to the group from Healthy Homes. I appreciated your words. I thought you were all very prepared, extremely persuasive, and respectful of the rules of the democratic process here, and I appreciate that. And I just want to echo what others have said, that we should really brainstorm ways to be innovative in solving this problem that's real. And it's overwhelming when you look at the number of homes affected in the county, but I think the true metric is the number of kids, and that's what we need to keep in mind, keep brainstorming on that topic.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I just wanted to thank those that came from the 49507. I thank all of the people of 49507 who voted to put me in this seat, and as it being my job to be a voice for 49507, I totally agree with you. Our elevated lead levels are even higher than Flint, and I would hope that the state would start taking Grand Rapids, Michigan, 49507 serious. We should be getting the same funding and the attention as Flint because we have even more lead. I was the first candidate to ever run with lead as a top issue in the 2016 elections. At that time, some people were saying that it wasn't a Kent County problem. Not all of our commissioners were saying that. Some of them had already started putting the task force together, so I arrived just on time. I hope that one day I can join that task force because, as I'm knocking on doors in the 49507, not only am I hearing about the problems as we heard tonight, we're hearing about some of the solutions that are coming from the people who are most affected by it, but I will continue to be a voice and stand up for the children. And I'm sure we have a lot of colleagues here that feel the same way about helping out in the 49507. And now that more testing is going, we are finding out there are more high elevated lead poisoning in the townships than we thought. So, it is countywide, but 49507 is ground zero, and I want to thank you for coming out once again.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Commissioner Skaggs.
Well, I don't know if we want Miscellaneous to get back into a back and forth, but perhaps I was misunderstood. All I'm asking for is fairness. You know, tipping fee out there is the same for someone from Byron Center and their garbage as it is from East Grand Rapids. You know, my community helped pay in Grand Rapids and East Grand Rapids for the incinerator so that we have less material going in to the landfill, as Dar mentioned earlier. So, I encourage you to go back to your community and find out ways that you can increase recycling.
Great. Commissioner Ponstein.
So, yeah, this tit-for-tat between cities and townships. I heard a remark that, you know, it's all done with. I know the staff is working on the report. Is there a timeframe when we can? Because we can go back and forth. Not a Granville's trash goes to the landfill. We pay a premium to send it to the incinerator, which the six cities paid for, which is a county asset. The same thing's true with our jail incarceration. When a township member comes to the city of Granville or Wyoming and is arrested, the city pays an additional per diem to keep him in jail or her. I would love to send a bill to the township's office paid for when that township resident comes to our cities and breaks the law. So, this can go back and forth consistently, and it's starting to fester as the makeup the county commission's making. So, the sooner that we get this report, the better. I think it will be eye-opening to those who have never served on a city council, and for those that have never served as a township representative, what really the responsibilities are, and what the costs are, and what the benefits are of both the townships and the city that make up Kent County.
Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with you, Commissioner Ponstein. And I'd like to thank you, Cal, for all of your hard work, and the gentleman sitting next to you, and everyone else that has worked on that particular issue. And I would like to say thank you, 49507, for coming out tonight. It's so important, you know, in our community. A lot of times, we don't show up to these meetings, so we're not heard, and we leave it for other people to do it for us. But thank you. I personally appreciate you for coming out, and we do hear you. We hear you. And I know we're going to do something about it. I just don't know what, but I'm going to be working hard. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I appreciate the Healthy Homes parents and grandparents coming out tonight as well. We have, our Lead Task Force has ended a year or so ago. We have another group that's been working through the Health Department on, you know, working on the lead problem. Could we have an update on exactly what we are doing and where we are going?
Adam is scheduled, I think, in the next board meeting or the following already to do that. So, we're, it's in the works. They just kind of, we...
So, we'll get a complete update, you know, what we have done and where we're going?
Yep. Yep.
I'd like to know that.
Was already planned, so.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner Miscellaneous? All right. Please indulge me. I have a few updates, and probably one of them should have been in officially reports, but, sorry. I want to thank the members of the community for coming out today. We did do the Lead Task Force, but we do need to continue to hear from you. I really appreciate you sitting through this long board meeting. You don't get paid to sit here like we do, so thank you for doing that. And I know your little guy, what an awesome little guy, because I don't know that my kids would have sat through this. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming today, and appreciate your comments. Couple quick things. We do have the Strategic Plan Work Group scheduled for 2/28, so I want to remind members of that. It's scheduled for 7:30 before our board meeting. It's only an hour. We may need to, instead of doing another day, may need to do an after-board. I had executive committee meetings scheduled, but I'd like to get it done in one day if we can. So, kind of, if you're interested in hearing more about the strategic plan or participating, please plan accordingly because that might be basically most of the morning. Regarding the Immigration Focus Group, we have started, and we're going to do two phases. One, the first phase is called the Initial Engagement Team, and that's going to be the conveners for the community. We don't want the whole group as a whole to be, you know, politician-heavy. This needs to come from the community. We're the conveners, and that initial engagement team is, sorry, I should have hit it ready. The initial engagement team's going to be Administrator Britt, Sheriff LaJoy Young, Adam London, Commissioner Womack, Commissioner Sparks, and Commissioner Antor. They will be meeting sometime the first week of March. They will set the scope and the schedule for the rest of the year. And then, we have 27 groups identified to start meeting with and start convening these meetings. So, this will be robust. This will be a deep dive. We have heard from one or two organizations, but we are going to hear from the whole community, and we're going to make sure that, we want to see what the roadblocks are for the immigrant population and the refugee population to access county services. So, I just want to be clear that, yes, this has taken longer than we've wanted. I've been hounding staff for dates for a month, but I want to get it right, and I don't want to be hasty about it, and I think we need to do it right. So, thank you for your patience on that. Next item, we have legislative priorities coming up. Commissioner Steck leads that for Legislative Subcommittee. Typically, for new members, what we do is we send out kind of a pre-draft of what didn't get done last year, some items we've heard from commissioners currently. And then, again, we have a tight timeframe because, like it or not, this is a term-limited legislature, and we need to get our requests in, in my opinion, having worked there, probably prior to summer break. We want to get them in prior to the budget process, and we want to get them going because, once you hit summer break, and once you hit fall break, you've lost a year, then you're into election year. And so, it's going to seem a little quick, but there's a reason why it's quick, and it's the legislative calendar. So, I want to be clear with that. You'll get a draft. We're going to ask you for your requests, and then Commissioner Steck has planned a March 14th at 7:30 workshop on that, work group. But, in the meantime, get your requests in, talk to Commissioner Steck about why you feel something needs to be on there, and we'll address it. Sorry, a couple more. The City and Township Report we've been hearing about, I'm being told it will be hopefully finished by the end of this quarter, beginning of the second quarter. Again, we need your input. I would prefer to not be in a board meeting and hear, you know, specific complaints. We've got staff working on it. They're working hard on it. If you have specific concerns or requests, please direct them to staff. We got a request from the CIA. They're creating a Subcommittee regarding the hotel for the Convention Center. We were requested to appoint a commissioner. I'm appointing Commissioner Roger Morgan to that.
I just moved one resolution tonight. That's all right.
But, you know, I want to just honor Commissioner Morgan a second, just because, you know, Commissioner Morgan, I chose him because he was here for some of that stuff in the beginning, and he knows, he's our historian in some respects.
That's a nice way to say it.
Not a very good one.
And so, I do really... And so I do really value his knowledge base and his ability to dig right into the details and understand the issue, so, and his perspective. So, I've saved the best for last, in my opinion. I want to call up Jack Stewart and Lou Hunt. Please come forward. I'm going to read this, I know that's annoying, but I don't want to get the statistics wrong, but I want to acknowledge our first responders, our dispatch, our road commission, our essential staff. I had conversations with our mayor last Saturday, she was getting ready to call the state of emergency, and I got to be patched into the emergency center and hear all the great report outs of what's happening, and the best thing to hear after you hear, you know, people in need and people accessing our services was, Commissioner Bolter, we got this. We got this, we're on it. There was no lack of confidence on my end that they were there. So, I want, I'm sorry to call you up here and embarrass you, I don't mean to do that, but I just want to really acknowledge you for all your work, you know, poor Jack, I mean, he retired a while ago, and he's still here, and he's like, you know. But, just real quickly, our dispatcher served 10 law enforcement agencies, 28 fire departments, the Kent County Animal Control. During the peak of the ice storm, our call takers answered, on average, now this is our dispatch, 190 calls per hour for seven straight hours. This represents 18 times the normal volume of calls. From February 4th to the 8th, they processed 1,361 fire department dispatches. That is over two and a half times the number of fire-related incidents from the same dates in 2018. The men and women of our road commission, I want to thank for keeping nearly 2,000 miles of roads clear, and over 170 bridges within the county, and providing us safe roads. And, you know, lastly, I want to thank the residents that we serve, because they allow us to empower these folks to keep us safe. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Skaggs, do you want to make any comments or say anything? I mean, this meeting could go on and on, it's only Valentine's Day, I'm sure you're-
I will be brief. We are transitioning, I think you all know that I'm retiring probably for the last time.
We'll see.
But anyways, my successor's Lou Hunt, great guy, and I just would like to comment on how well that operation went in the emergency operations center. It just went phenomenal. We were very, very, very busy, there were times when it was very intense, but I'd like to, just to draw your attention to the special attention we drew to special needs groups. We got contacts with people we didn't hear from, we made a contact with our patrol officers if we couldn't get a hold of them over the phone, and it was complete, all the way through the gambit of emergency response, and it went very, very well, and I'm on my way out, so I'd like to at least take this opportunity to say thanks to all of you for the support I've had in my tenure, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
And I just have to say, Jack and I went to paramedic school together, and he's older than I am.
I was going to say, what year was that? Lou, do you have anything to add?
I don't want to steal Jack's thunder, but with what Jack was talking about, with our special needs groups, if you haven't met Pat Draper, she's over at our health department, fantastic, and just such a tremendous resource with that, and she has such a great network with that, and that was just pivotal for us.
Yeah, and on my call, I would say, "Hey, let's get Meals on Wheels, they already have a network to go check on people." They're like, "We've already done that. Hey, what about this? We've already done that." Everything I did, I suggested, it was not new to them, so, thank you again, and appreciate it. And with that, I will call on Commissioner Skaggs for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Subject to the call is here, it's a Thursday, February 28th, 2019, 8:30 a.m.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.